The Franklin County Boulder County Commission is now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Allen Pierce, Restore Coordinator.
Mr. Chairman, I had you do item number sixteen, but I will say at some point when the meeting is calm, I'm gonna distract you for a second during the meeting to have you sign the notice of receipt for the airport project because we dated it for tomorrow, so I want to get it signed today and get it to them so they know they can start tomorrow.
Okay.
So I just want to tell you that some one, I'll be tapping you on the shoulder and get a few documents.
On this clarification, the twenty first is today.
Oh, then they definitely want to sign today. Okay, sorry about that. In fact, the clerk reminded me that the other day that we need to have it signed on the right day, so we'll get that done in just a minute. The other two items are really for information, they both relate to Alligator Point. Alligator Drive Hurricane Michael update. Over the Christmas holidays, the FEMA contractors working on the Alligator Drive repairs have completed their work and sent their report to the Consolidated Resource Center called CRC in Virginia for approval. After the CRC approves the scope and cost of project, the project will still have to be authorized through some sort of congressional approval because the proposed project is above what FEMA can authorize on its own. The FEMA contractor I talked to said that congressional authorization is standard process because of the cost and should not take that long to acquire. The contractor said that his staff had labeled this project as rush, so we will see what that means to FEMA. As I understand, the FEMA contractor did not modify the design, so the project should be what the county submitted. I say that parenthetically because I haven't seen their product yet, so I can't tell you absolutely they didn't delete something, but based upon the dollars that he told me and the dollars we have a bid on, they seem to be the same, so I'm presuming everything is the same. Because the board may recall that I reported on December seventeenth that the contract initially found some one million dollars of construction costs in the county design that they thought were not eligible. That issue has been resolved, so the county's design should be intact. Obviously, I'll know it for sure when we get the project out of FEMA, but I think it's a fact. The project still does not have a PW assigned to it, so I say this really for the public's benefit, Commissioner Bolt. Anyone seeking information on the status of the project will have to ask the federal officials, describe it as Hurricane Michael Alligator Drive repairs. It's much easier if you have a PW, and every time you call your congressman or your senator, they want to know, "What's the PW number?"
Yeah.
Well, there isn't one, and it drives everybody crazy.
Yeah.
But I can't get a PW number until it gets through the CRC. Okay, that's that. Commissioner Bolt, unless you have any question on that, this information I'm telling you, I will also tell APTA in February, because I don't, maybe there'll be an improvement, but this is what I know.
Okay.
I'm still counting on approval getting in time for us to start in March.
Yeah.
I'm still holding.
What I've been telling them.
Because if we don't start in March, at some point Roberts and Roberts is going to say there's cost increases.
Yeah.
And I've warned FEMA that every time I talk to them.
Yep, good.
So. Regarding the beach fractures, next item. As the board mayor called at the December seventeenth meeting, I reported that Representative Schoeff had strongly encouraged the county to push forward with a beach and urgent project to protect Alligator Drive. And Commissioner Bolt was at the meeting where Representative Schoeff made these comments. To that end, I contacted our beach and urgent project consultant, Mike Nebraska, and asked if we could accelerate the project. For the 2020 legislative session, the county had asked, has asked for $200,000 of design funds for the project. And Representative Schoeff suggested we ask for the $5 million of construction funds as well. So I called Mr. Nebraska. Mr. Nebraska consulted with his FDIP contacts and was told that it was too late to change the county's request because FDIP had already turned any of its budget requests to the governor's office. I've advised Representative Schoeff of this. And on Tuesday last week, January fourteenth, Representative Schoeff contacted me for additional information on this, so I know he's attempting to find a way to get funding. And I will tell you what I advise him, and of course, he's a representative and he has more knowledge of this running system than I do, there are really two ways at this point to get additional funding. Either get the governor to amend the FDIP budget, put $5 million in there, or for Representative Schoeff to get line item appropriation through the legislature. He's an incoming representative. I don't think he has the clout to get $5 million of funding, but that's his choice, and those are really the only two choices I know he has. So I will tell you all that I'm not overly optimistic about us getting $5 million for beach construction, so I'm hoping we get the $200,000. That's not even certain, because we are not ranked very high in FDIP's list. Maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't, depends on how much they fund. I say this to you, Representative Bolt, Commissioner Bolt, because they are, Alligator Point people are working on some funding proposals to help pay for the beach maintenance. So they are accepting some responsibility on their side to say, "Okay, we understand the county is making an effort, and we ought to try to match that effort or meet that effort." So I'll just tell you that. But I'm afraid that it's gonna be, not this year we have a beach, it may be 2021 or 2022. I mean, I just, I just, that's what I'm afraid of. We're gonna, in my opinion, is we're gonna build the road anyway. We need to build that road and get people, like, a road down there and have them wash the way.
Yeah.
FEMA will come back and fix it again. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't want to delay the FEMA project just because we don't have a beach. And Commissioners, that's my report.
Okay.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Pierce?
When are they gonna get on to dredging part?
I, our, gosh, the update on that is I did call the Corps of Engineers. The good news is there's been no delay. The only bad news is we have a new project manager at the Corps in Mobile. His name is Dwayne something, I forget, I have it written down. And I left him a voicemail, I'll be honest with you. When I called our, when I called our previous contact, Commissioner Jones, I forget the guy's name now.
Nathan Lovelace.
Nathan Lovelace. His phone now is rerouted to somebody else, and Nathan had told us he was getting promoted back a while ago. So this is to be expected. I did call this other person, whose name escapes me right now, and left a voicemail asking him for an update. I did that on Friday. Monday was a holiday, so I should've done it earlier, but I didn't. I don't know of any delays, because the next step is for the Corps to show up with three designs based upon what they think is feasible, and then for us to work with them to pick the best design. I don't know of any, any holdups, Commissioner, but I do agree they should, they told us end of January, and of course, by their schedule, it's not the end of January yet, even though we don't have another meeting, so for all I know, they still, they still, they may still think they're on time.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be the Community Action Agency, Ms. Angela Webster.
Commissioners, before Angela starts, I'm gonna suggest that Deborah Belcher sit not too far behind her, because there's an item on Deborah's report that coincides with Angela's report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Angela Webster, Community Action. So Capital Area Community Action was contacted by a survivor from 582 Ridge Road. It appears that the actual property owner is applying for a CDBG home and would like to donate his trailer from the sheriff to this survivor. The survivor's requesting assistance with the cost to break down, move, and set up the trailer donated by the sheriff's office. I have a letter from EOC confirming this survivor has not received any assistance since the time of the fire, so he did not receive temporary housing, he never had a camper trailer or any of that. According to the contractor, the cost would be $5,500 to do the breakdown, the move, and the setup, and this is to include the plumbing connection. And then for the three loads of dirt, I'm sorry, three loads of dirt from Jason White Construction, I was quoted anywhere from 200 to 240 per load, depending on the size of the truck, and there's three loads needed. And then I spoke with Kate's Electric, and Mr. Mike Kate's informed me that he could not provide a quote without an exact location of the trailer to determine the distance from the power pole, but he estimates that the cost would not exceed $1,000. So I'm asking if the board would please approve use of fire relief funds in the amount of 7,300, well, not to exceed 7,300, to pay for the cost to break down, move, and set up the trailer donated from one fire survivor to another, and this will include the dirt required for surface pad and the cost for power to be connected.
Who is that for?
This is for Paul Z. Pete Sanders.
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lockley.
Go ahead.
I don't really know what to say or how much to say here, but this survivor never had a home during the fire. He lived with his father.
Well, from the information that I have from EOC, he had a trailer in the father's backyard. It's the other brother that we had with the camper is the one that did not, that lived in the house with the father, from my understanding, because I came in later, but the documents that I have shows that that one had a home in the backyard.
And it was a legal trailer, because you only allow one unit per acre.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Which is probably why he didn't receive any assistance to begin with.
He didn't receive it.
Another question, another question I had is that we allowed one person to take one of these trailers that the sheriff had donated and moved to Carabelle, is that correct, Ms. Belcher?
Outside of Carabelle, yes, sir.
Did he pay for his own transportation? Did he pay to have his own trailer set up? Did he pay to do all of that? I think it was a requirement that he had to do that.
We can transport a reasonable distance, and it's already included in the pricing that we're getting for the CDBG purchases, because we otherwise would have to demolish and clear the site anyway. So that part is not a problem. But all the rest of the setup, yes, it is their responsibility, or some non-CDBG source.
Okay, I understand that. My problem is, is that all these people deserve, from day one of the fire to now, all the people deserve to be treated with equality and follow the same rules, the same mechanisms, and you can't, in my opinion, we can't continue to change the rules as we move forward, because these other people are held to a certain standard and a certain set of rules, procedures, and protocol, and as we move further, we're changing all that. That's just my opinion, that's not the opinion of the board. I wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Well, I think the person that's receiving the donated trailer that Ms. Deborah is doing is not one of our East Point Fire people.
You're talking about the?
The one that's receiving them, yes.
Carabelle? Yes, he was not in East Point Fire. He, he was a fire victim, but not from East.
He paid for everything. He had to be paid for everything, have it moved, set up, and everything.
Right.
Right.
Except, we'll pay for the actual moving.
Yes.
But not, not the setup.
So they're paying for the transport for him, he's just paying for the setup. And then the person I'm referring to, the reason he did not receive anything from the fire relief funds or anything when he, after the fire happened, is because he was incarcerated. It wasn't because of any other reasons, but he was incarcerated at the time.
I understand.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mastin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, well.
Do you have any questions?
You have a mark. Yeah, never mind, we're good.
We're moving over, wait a minute. Next on the agenda will be, Ms. Belcher. CDBG Administrator, Ms. Deborah Belcher, report.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good evening.
I have a, it's still afternoon, even though it seems like evening.
Yeah.
I have a few items. The first item, Kathy Hill, she is approved to participate, the board approved her application, we have environmental clearance, we got bids on her home, but initially she had said, "Yeah, two-bedroom is okay," but she has family that are with her a lot of the time, especially a grandchild, and so she's asking that she be allowed to have a three-bedroom instead of a two-bedroom, and, you know, those single wides, the third bedroom is more about storage, there's not a lot of room in those third bedrooms, but it's not that much more, and I'm recommending that you allow us to go back to the bidders who already submitted bids. They, they all submitted three-bedroom plans on the other locations, so they could use those models and just update them for this particular location.
Well, what she had before the fire?
She had, it started out as a two-bedroom, but she had an addition, so this would be more comparable to what she had.
Yeah.
Well, she actually has it still, because it was not completely, it was damaged but not burned down, so she's still living in it, and the conditions are very bad.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, the next item relates to what Ms. Angela was telling you about. Just at this point, I'm asking for approval for Paul Z. Sanders, the father, to receive a CDBG home, and that would be contingent upon the donation of his existing sheriff's home to his son and the other funds, because we would not do anything with the CDBG other than transport the existing home off of the lot. I do not have environmental clearance on that, so I'm not asking for approval of a contract at this time, just approval of the application, so I'll know that I have the authority to start setting up a contract when the environmental clearance comes in.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
And the next item I'm bringing back to you for consideration, the application for Mary Louise Thomas. She is completely eligible for the CDBG home replacement as a homeowner, with the excepting, exception that when she got divorced, there was a glitch in her hearing, and the judge granted her divorce but did not divide the property. She has gotten zero cooperation from her ex-husband as far as splitting the property ownership. My recommendation is that we do a loan on against the, when I say loan, you know, I'm talking about the same forgivable thing that we would if we had land, but do it against the mobile home only. The title would reflect that the county is a lien holder, so they issue titles similar to the, how a car is done, and it would show that Mary Louise Thomas is the owner of the mobile home, but the county is the lien holder.
Where you gonna put it at?
On the property that she already owns. I mean, she, she has, she's living there now, she owns it as much as he does, and so she would have the right to put the prop, put the mobile home there, but I don't think we can legally do a mortgage that he would not agree to on the land.
Pleasure to the board.
Don't they got kids?
They have, she is remarried and has an infant grandson with her, and she also had two other grandchildren who were living with her that she would like to get back.
Yeah. She, she had them, she had to move them out, because she had run them.
Right.
Put them, yeah. So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
And then the last one is just approval of an application for James Alvin and Mary C. Banks to proceed with their, just to proceed with their application. They are still in their home. It was not damaged as much as some, but it was in bad shape to begin with, so it's not feasible to rehabilitate, and so I'm recommending that we proceed with their application for a replacement.
So moved. Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Where y'all at with Mr. Creamer, Devin?
Well, the last communication I had was through Michael Morone when I, and I think I've shown Commissioner Jones pictures of the lot, and I've shown Commissioner Lockley pictures to you of what it has looked like, so we have the issue of an incomplete application and the yard looking pretty much like a salvage yard. And...
Devin Creamer?
You're, I'm assuming that's Anna Creamer, his husband?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he know he pulled what y'all want him to clean up, or what?
Well, he said he's not speaking to me, so.
I mean, that explains why I gotta call the TV leader in the meeting.
Okay.
So where are we, just the, I'm sorry, thank you. Just the cleaning up the yard, and?
Well, they have to verify their income.
Okay.
Of, of course, I mean, it's a HUD grant, and they have not done, they have not submitted an actual application. I did get earlier, when, one of the many times I was there, I took pictures of driver's licenses, you know, identification type things, but I never got an actual application.
Okay.
He's a fire victim?
Well, they had some damage to their existing home from a result, apparently this big, large ember blew onto their home and caused some damage.
Well, if he's a fire victim, I'd like to see him get some help, rest him again.
Mr. Chairman, for a minute. Ms. Deborah, what about Mr. Dennis? Did we ever resolve anything with him?
Um...
I don't remember his last name right now, so...
That's the one we're talking about here, the, oh, you're talking about Dennis Reiner?
There you go.
Oh, Dennis Reiner was over the income limit, and I tried my best to see how we could possibly exclude some of his income, because most all of it is going to his wife's assisted living facility.
Right.
Care. So he has very little left, but I can't touch him with CDBG because of his income lim, I mean, it's a federal income limit that we can't exceed.
So we run that a lot in this county, because we have, they say that our median income is 43,000, and I know maybe, in my median circle, maybe one or two people that exceed that.
Yeah, well, the HUD limit, he exceeded considerably, but again, and I do feel sorry for him because of, his income is just all, you know, it's gone, because his wife's care is so expensive, but I, I mean, I tried to find loopholes and discussed it with the state, but...
That's the way a lot of assistance programs are. Several years ago, when my wife was very sick with a, just something that she wasn't going to recover from, we went to Panama to apply for Bay cares, because I was told, you know, so many Franklin County dollars go to fund that. The lady told me everything to get, all the paperwork to have, I took the day off work and went up there. We were there three minutes, and she told me I made $20 too much last year, and she cited the same thing you're citing.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a limit, and there's nothing we can do about it, so.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing I'll reiterate that I think some of these board members have said, we started down this road to help everybody that was burned out, so that's, that's what we're dealing with, us personally.
Now, other, other things, you're, he did receive insurance compensation.
But even if he tried to do as the other lady, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, yeah.
Even if he did as the other lady did and used that money toward a home, you still can't help him, is what you're saying.
No, not with CDBG funds. Now, your donated funds, that's a different story.
That's right.
But CDBG can't.
I just wanted to be clear. I'll, to be honest with you, I'm asking the questions more to get on the record than anything else.
Right.
But my thing is, if a person, if they had damage, they're a fire victim. But then, you got people who had damage, now they finna get another trailer, and they donating it to who they want, but the people who were victims, they, they've got a few issues, I know, but he's a fire victim. Man needs some help, and he got a family. Okay, anybody else got anything for me, Burke?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to ask Ms. Angela a question, though.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Ms. Angela, you're acting like you had an answer to the question.
I did.
Okay.
I spoke with Mr. Thornburg, who is Mr. Reiner's son-in-law, I think.
That's correct.
And they are looking for Mr. Reiner, a trailer they've spoken with, Michael Morrison from Ironwood Homes, and what they're looking to see is how much Mr. Reiner can afford to put on that home, and wants to know if we would use fire relief funds to pay for what he's short.
Okay.
But they're supposed to provide me with the contract from Ironwood Homes that says how much his home is gonna cost.
Okay.
And I'll bring that back before the board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda will be, Ms. Marsha Jones?
I have no report, Ms. Deborah.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be, County Coordinator, Mr. Michael Morone?
Hey, Commissioners, long day. Well, I did warn you about it at the last meeting.
Yeah, we know.
All right, so my meeting starts, I'm sorry, my meeting, my report starts on page seven, item number nineteen. The low bid for the county, for County Row 67 Tallahassee Street Sidewalk Project.
This is interesting.
Which we opened at the last meeting, is 342,540.95 above the available funds in the grant. Mr. Kurington has checked with FDOT, and they cannot provide any additional funds. Their remaining choice is to reduce the scope of work to bring the project within the available budget. This means eliminating some of the sidewalk. The original contract with the design engineers, Innovia Consulting Group, did not include revisions to the plans after bid opening, so they have provided a cost estimate for revising the plans and negotiating a reduction, reduction in the scope with CDM contracting. They were the low, low bidder. The cost, the cost, Innovia's cost is $4,610. This is a Sea of Carabelle project that the county is administering for the city, because they're not LAP certified, so the final decision on reducing the scope of work and paying the associated fee to Innovia should be the city's responsibility.
Yes.
So I'm asking for board action to inform the Sea of Carabelle, basically what I just told you, the project's budget issues, discuss the options reducing the scope of work, the associated costs, and negotiations reduction with the low bidder CDM contracting. Let them make a recommendation or decision, and then get back to us.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Item twenty, Commissioners, to try and guarantee the county keeps the $100,000 allocated by the legislature in 2018, the State Fire Marshal Office wants to go ahead and contract with Franklin County for those funds to help build a fire sprinkler system in Fort Coons Armory. To do this, Franklin County also needs to contract with EMO so we can show where the funds will be spent. So let me, some back information, I should've put more here. Basically, Commissioners, they told us we had, need to encumber that money as soon as possible, they were giving us till the end of this month. We didn't see the time to go out and advertise bids, we didn't have the time, even in an emergency situation, we still would've had to reach out and be back and forth, so to meet the deadline, as a matter of fact, if you approve this, I need it signed today, not tomorrow. What we did, since EMO is also a contractor, he's familiar with the project, we have a contract with him, and so for the first $100,000, so that he can start to do some of the preliminary work as we seek additional funding to complete the project.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
We need to press on with that, with just fire safety issues.
Well, I would say this to y'all, Legislative Day is coming up here in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
You're gonna be up in Tallahassee.
Yes.
It's one of the big things you need to push for, Commissioners, to get this funding to the legislative appropriation in whatever way we can.
That's next week.
Yep, it is.
Yes. Another, a good argument for you guys to go up there with is that Visit Florida, and Commissioner Jones can provide some more information. Visit Florida is coming and they're using the Armory for their two- or three-day conference. That's a statewide issue, Commissioner, correct?
Yep.
So, please, if you would lean on your legislators and say, "Look, you know, Visit Florida's coming, and you guys are talking about closing this down, you know, what, we need some help, as soon as possible."
Were you gonna make us sort of an informal white paper on talking points?
If you'd like me to, I will, sir.
I think we talked about what we would talk about relative to the legislative delegation that came here last fall.
No problem.
Okay.
I believe that new, the new man, he, he trying.
He is.
That's a statewide issue, Commissioner, correct?
Yep.
So, uh, please, if you would lean on your legislators and say, look, you know, you Visit Florida is coming and you guys are talking about closing this down, you know, what, what, we need some help as soon as possible.
Were you gonna make us sort of an informal white paper on talking points?
If you'd like me to, I will, sir.
We talked about what we would talk about relative to the legislative delegation that came here last fall.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe that new, um, the new man, he, he trying.
He is.
Trying hard. He put up, he trying to get, he...
Yep.
Get that money, well, he got, he passed through them committees for this place out here.
Yeah, for the sheriff.
For the sheriff, so.
Yep.
That's, that's a pretty good move. Better than the last one, eh?
Item twenty-one, um, Mr. Kurington, your county planner stated it's been years since Franklin County has discussed the development of regional impact. But we might have a request for an amendment to the St. James DRI in the future. Previously, the state and the regional planning council reviewed DRIs and for that reason, Franklin County did not have our P and Z commission review them. Now, the state and regional planning council no longer reviews amendments to, to existing DRIs. Therefore, the county planner recommends that the request for amendments to DRIs be reviewed by the planning and zoning before they come to the Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to lean, lean here in Commissioner Parrish, since Mr. Pierce is gone, to further explain the, what, the DRI, Commissioner. You, you served in P and Z for quite a while.
What about it?
Explain what a D, what a DRI is because Mark kinda popped this item on me.
Well, I mean, it's just, uh, it's a lot bigger than a sketch plaid or anything like that. This is, this is between, uh, St. Joe where they had a D, DRI development approved back in the day. And as you're saying, they may want to make amendments to it, changes to it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just a big, it's a large scale, uh, large scale land use project, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's basically all it is, hundreds of acres.
Okay, okay.
Instead of one or twenty acres, hundreds.
Okay, thank you.
That's why they call it...
A DRI and not a sketch plaid, okay.
Regional impact.
Yeah, regional impact, I'm sorry.
Local impact.
Yes, sir.
I know we done changed it.
Well, they might. They might.
Yeah. So, so, Mr. Chairman, what I'm asking for is action on the board to, to, you guys authorize us to have Planning and Zoning Commission review all amendments to DRIs prior to being, come before you at any meeting. So, basically be part of a planning and zoning report that you get the second meeting of every month.
Okay, pledge of the vote.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by two of Commissioner, Master and Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Can we address twenty-two earlier, script goes straight to twenty-three. Around mid-December, Mr. Jim Coleman, Alliance, President of Alliance TMH and I discussed the concerns and feedback that I received from county commissioners, weans Board of Directors and the public at large regarding their proposal. I had the same conversation with Mr. Roger Hall earlier last year, that's right before Thanksgiving in November. Mr. Coleman contacted me about a week, week and a half ago and stated that Mr. Mark O'Brien, TMH's president and CEO, would like an opportunity to address the board to further explain TMH's role in the Alliance TMH partnership with Franklin County, uh, i.e. their proposal. The earliest available date for this, for this board, Mr. Mark O'Brien and Mr. Coleman to meet is Wednesday, February fifth. What I'm asking for is a special, for the board to authorize a special meeting on that day at ten o'clock for the opportunity to have Mr. Mark O'Brien and Mr. Jim Coleman address the board regarding healthcare in Franklin County and the partnership.
Pledge of the vote.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Master. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to recognize a couple of things. Uh, we have also concurrently offered, um, Mr. Roger Hall to come back and, and talk some more to our board if he needs to. Um, didn't we also, uh, know that because we didn't submit a request for proposal for these presentations, that we have a fluid opportunity here to get as much information as possible about these two providers as we and the board, uh, Hospital Board makes these very careful decisions. Uh, you know, it's my opinion that, that, um, the health of our people is the most important asset that we have in this board to, to be considered. And so, all the input we can, uh, regardless of the timing, is very appropriate for us to get gathered together with our Hospital Board to make these decisions.
I will say this, Commissioners, to follow up and, uh, Commissioners both. Uh, li, at the end of last week, uh, Mr. Roger Hall's secretary had requests, he had requested, uh, conference call meeting with me uh, this morning while I was here. Uh, I confirmed it, so the call is this afternoon at, uh, let me see, two-thirty Central, three-thirty our time. So, I will, I will have a conference call with Mr. Roger Hall. If there's something, a date that he has, he wants to present, I would let the board know, like, to come back and meet, so, but yes.
Okay.
So, so that's already happening?
Oh, yeah, there's a conference call this afternoon with Mr. Roger Hall. So, he contacted, end of last week, sir, that request came in and I confirmed it and they confirmed it this morning.
That's, that's good because that's really where we're at. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's where we're at, uh... I mean, they were proposals.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to, if it's not what they proposed at the beginning, when it's not good enough, we need to ask for what is good.
Yes, that's right.
With votes, with expression.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter if they come back ten times, until we get what we're looking for, what's good for Franklin County, I think that's what counts.
And you see, that's the role of the county commission, which like, we're a prudent buyer in many ways and we really need to look at everything. And I just feel publicly, I, there's been no agenda set, given to us by our Hospital Board about any opinions that they, opinions that they have or anything. We're delegating much of this to the Hospital Board. And we're still gathering data on behalf of good healthcare in this county.
That's what, that's what y'all's role, that's your role. Uh, if, if we're finished, I can move to item twenty-four. At the January seventh meeting, the library director was terminated by the board. So, there is, so that there isn't a repeat of previous issues. And based on the labor attorney's report, I am recommending that Ms. Whitney, Whitney Roundtree, I think she's a senior library assistant, is allowed to serve in a capacity as a, as a library assistant supervisor over both library branches as a temporary position. Ms. Roundtree, additional duties in this role would include, but are not limited to, employee scheduling, time and attendance, reviewing invoices, managing library programs, book orders, conferring with WILD, and other duties as assigned. I recommend a temporary twenty-five hundred dollar salary increase for these additional responsibilities. Ms. Roundtree will confer with me on a daily basis and, on a daily basis. If the board is inclined to agree to this temporary role, I also request that the board authorize travel expenses so that Ms. Roundtree can attend library day on January twenty-second in Tallahassee, which is tomorrow.
So move. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Master, second by Commissioner Jones.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I got one, one question for Mr. Chairman. Should we be coming reporting for the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, I should have add, added that, yeah.
Make sure you come and report.
Monthly reports, yes, sir.
And how things are going.
Yep.
Temporary, how, how temporary? How long is temporary?
Um, until we go out, what I'm, what I'm doing, actually working with, with WILD about creating, um, uh, job descriptions. They have, uh, but I'm pulling a few from different counties to create a job description and I will bring that to the board at some point so you can approve one, pick one and then me, let's advertise. Because the board gave me the impression that they, they, you, you guys now want to control that and treat it like every other employee and department head like you do rather than how it was done before.
Mm-hmm.
That's the impression I got from the board, so that's the path I'm, I'm taking forward.
Okay. We done voted.
Yep.
We voted, then.
Uh, yeah.
Like I'm gonna stop now.
No, you have not.
Oh, oh, all, all them people?
Aye.
All opposed? They're passing none of them.
And Commissioners, the last item is the information item about the, the permit clerk that Mark and Amy interviewed and they recommended to me and we hired and she should start Monday if we can get her drug test and everything done. And that's all I have for the board. Oh, uh, no, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Um, I got a, uh, email from, uh, Ferovial. The lighting contract for the bridges is finally in place, so they're gonna start replacing the lights on the bridges here within the next week or so.
Oh, good.
I think the lights on top and the ones, and the navigation lights on the bottom of the bridge. I know, I've, I've gotten quite a few calls about those lights, so.
They better do them navigation first.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think that they're seeing some, we're missing up on top and some on the bottom.
Michael, just one question I was wondering if you could consider, just as a style thing that I'm just continuing to learn.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you look at, uh, your, uh, I think it's item number seven. I wanted to show you where, in, in that item, uh, here, it's item number twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Yeah. What you did, and I really like it, is, uh, you described that word, development of regional impact and then you said DRI. My question is, can you give us the meaning of these initials that we see all through so much of our correspondence?
Yes.
If the writers could put down the, the actual writing word of the initial the first time.
Okay.
So that we can then know what they mean.
So, you're asking for all your other people to submit reports?
All the other, all the other department heads and everybody.
I will, I'll let them know, sir.
Okay, thank you.
In a month.
I got one thing for Mr. Maron. I received an email from Tri Rivers Waterway Development Authority, somebody that we, has to do with the water wars, it's one of those organizations that sent an invoice to me dated eleven, eleven and twenty-six. I keep forgetting to bring it to your attention. Did you receive that email?
No, it doesn't, it's not familiar. Um...
Mr. Billy Turner, he's been here to address the board previous time.
Mm-hmm. I don't remember receiving that. I'll, I'll go double check though. I'll do a search and see if I can find it.
Deleted it.
Okay.
By mistake.
That's fine.
It had the invoice and everything with it.
Okay, I'll find it, Commissioner. That shouldn't be a problem. I could search Tri River, I'll find it one way or the other.
Yeah. Is everybody going to Tallahassee next weekend stay?
I think so.
Yep.
What day are y'all leaving? Tuesday?
I am, yeah.
Tuesday afternoon, staying, and staying Wednesday, coming back Wednesday evening.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, I think...
We need our paperwork, don't we?
Oh, yeah. I'll make sure I get that to you.
Yeah, we need that because we wanna see it.
Already, I'll double check. And I think I saw online where Small County Coalition has a meeting...
That night?
That night, that Tuesday night, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll get that to you.
Tuesday night, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Tuesday night, they have their meeting, we'll be there.
Yeah, yeah, be there for that meeting too.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's what, at seven?
I believe so, yeah.
I think so.
Seven.
I can't remember where though, Commissioner, don't ask me where.
It's right there by the hotel. What, what hotel we in?
I don't know.
Oh, I guess.
Don't remember that.
I have to have somebody smarter than me, ah, Cheyenne.
Right there on Adder Street by the cap, right?
Yeah, we was right there, last time we stayed right there behind it, or right there beside it.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'll get that for you, sir. I'll get your stuff for you.
And I'll be staying a couple of days over for certification training for county training.
You in high school for it, huh?
I'm going to school. That's right. I got some sharpened pencils.
Yeah, anybody else got anything for Mr. Maron?
I'll go ask for your stuff while Katrina's shooting.
Keep up the good work, sir.
Yes.
Next on the agenda be, um, County Attorney Report, Mike Cuda. I've been through that, that's a good thing.
Good, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
You will enjoy it.
Mr. Attorney Page three shows the diagram of a drawing of the Bay City Work Camp. Middle, center of the page. And just below that, circular drawing, or rectangular drawing, I should say, uh, square. I'll get my shapes right from like a third grader eventually. Below that is a one-acre rectangle, uh, the large square which reads as being four point zero eight acres. That is the perimeter fence around the Bay City Work Camp. And below that, south of the, uh, enclosure and on the south side of that little paved, uh, security road that goes around the perimeter fence, there's a one-acre parcel that is, uh, hundred and thirty-four feet wide and three hundred and twenty-five feet long. You have already acted as to the enclosed area within the, um, Bay City Work Camp and agreed to convey that property to the Bay City Wellness Center for a rehab center. My purpose in presenting that to you today is for you to confirm for me that I have in fact given correct instructions to the surveyor of the area that you intended to convey to the Bay City Wellness Center. And then my second purpose as to the rectangular parcel, the one-acre parcel, uh, that additional property you have not seen in an official capacity, you have not acted on that in any capacity. But the sheriff, during my meetings with him and negotiating a contract and the deed with the reverter provision for the four point eight acre parcel one, he mentioned that he would like for you to consider granting to him a one-acre parcel. He, he didn't say one acre, it's just whatever was south of that area for an exercise and garden area. So, two things that I'm asking the board to consider today is, have I correctly instructed the, um, surveyor to provide a legal description using the perimeter fence around Bay City Work Camp as the boundary of what you've already agreed to convey? And how does the board, uh, direct me to respond to the sheriff's request for the additional one acre?
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
All this stuff we begin to the sheriff, not, not no double party, just him, right?
I'm sorry, repeat that. My hearing, I've, I've got terrible ringing in the ears this morning.
What I'm saying, we getting all this to the sheriff department. We not getting it to a double party, right?
It is not going to the sheriff. I don't, I don't know that it's ever been intended to go to the sheriff.
I meant, I mean, he...
Please, a nonprofit.
It's going to...
Nonprofit, yeah.
Yes, sir, it's being conveyed to a nonprofit called Bay City Wellness Center.
Yeah.
LLC. Um, if you'll look on your, on my report that I've given to you, I've attached a draft contract. And if you'll go to, let's see, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have any bait stamps numbers on here, but the contract that I've drafted with the sheriff, if you go from page three and flip back to four, five, and six, and seven, you'll see that at present, the officers of, uh, Bay City Wellness Center, Inc., uh, the sheriff, A.J. Smith, not as the sheriff, but A.J. Smith individually is the president and the secretary is Ms. Christie Banks.
Okay.
At present. Now, how long that last? I mean, I don't know, corporations change their officers on occasion. I mean, in my family, we've had the same officer structure for decades and it may not change for decades or it could change in a week. I mean, who knows? But right now, it is, uh, proposed that this property be conveyed to that particular nonprofit with those two principles. I'm not aware of any reason why those principles are going to change, but I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that principles can change.
Well, in the event they do change, I would like for the board to know.
It won't make any difference if the officers change.
It won't.
The only, I mean, as it's presently structured, um, and I wouldn't recommend that you change that structure, the reverter provision would only kick in in the event that they fail to live up to the terms of the contract that's been drafted, the draft which is attached to this report, or if they fail to use the property as a rehab center or if they improperly expand the uses. If they expand the uses, well, then they need to come back to you to get prior approval before they do it or the property could revert. But a mere change in whoever the officer structure is would not trigger a reverter provision and typically it wouldn't.
Okay.
So move.
And I would second that. Did you want to...
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner... Master, second by Commissioner Burke, discussion.
Did you want to say something?
Uh, I see here in the beginning part of this contract, it says, agrees that Franklin County, including all of its residents and visitors, shall not now or in the future provide any adverbal or non-adverbal funds from any source for any part of the capital, non-capital cost and expense. So, I, I agree with that. I've told the sheriff that numerous times here in the board meeting that we cannot fund this, uh...
Those were the instructions from the board and that's why I wrote it so clearly.
And the other issue I have was about the reverter, which I know you have it in there and just making sure we have it in there.
Yes.
So that as Mr. Commissioner Lacher was stating, this is not given to the sheriff, it's given to this five oh one C three LLC.
Correct.
So, he cannot use that thing just any ways he wants to without coming back to this board. As you said, it has, you know, you cannot expand the uses or anything else without coming back to the board first.
Yes, sir.
Those are the only two comments that I have.
Yes.
My, my question would kind of piggyback off that. Uh, so would we refer to what people commonly refer to as subletting as to be a change in the structure of the contract? Like somebody else being stationed out there with that entity?
Commissioner, quite frankly, I, I was not asking the board to take action on the contract today. I haven't read this thing in probably six months. I know I have a provision that they cannot sell or convey the property, they cannot mortgage it. Uh, that is part of the reverter provision because, you know, this board's agreement is with Bay City Wellness Center only. You haven't made an agreement with anyone else. So, if they try to mortgage the property or transfer the property, that triggers, that's one of the triggers for the, uh, reverter provision. And that would automatically entitle you not only to the return of the fee simple interest in the property, that also would automatically entitle you to the possession of the property. Uh, tho, those are actually two distinct things if you'll think about, uh, to use your example. When you own property that you rent, just because you own it, there's a process you have to go through to get possession of it. If somebody, for example, doesn't pay their rent and that is through a, a petition for ejectment, a whole new lawsuit. Uh, tho, those are actually two distinct things, if you'll think about, uh, to use your example, when you own property that you rent, just because you own it, there's a process you have to go through to get possession of it, if somebody, for example, doesn't pay their rent, and that is through a, a petition for ejection, a whole new lawsuit. In this case, they're agreeing that we get not only the title back, but the possession back, and if, so maybe we can avoid those kind of, you know, litigious situations.
One more question.
Good.
Mr. Chairman. As far as the personnel that's going to be used to run this, uh, rehab center, is there anything in the contract about him not taking fifteen deputies and putting out there and then coming back here at budget time and wanting us to hire fifteen more, because now he's fifteen short? Those types of scenarios, when, when you, it is going to really cost more ad valorem tax dollars to turn around and hire X amount of deputies that are now not on the road patrolling, but they're at this drug rehab center?
I'm speed reading very quickly, and yes, there's a provision, if you'll look at paragraph two on page two of the contract.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, let me get back to page two.
That would be page number one, two, three, four, five of my report.
Let me see, what's it say?
That's what I'm reading right now.
Okay, I'm trying to follow along.
Uh, for the record, I'll read it, uh, and again, this is the draft, the sheriff has seen this and he's approved it, but I did not want to bring the contract or the deed back for this board's approval until you had first today approved for me, uh, and confirmed the accuracy of the legal description for the property parcel one, the fenced-in area that you had already agreed to convey to the five-oh-one-C nonprofit, and then secondarily, to authorize the additional conveyance of the additional one acre. Once that was confirmed, then I was going to finalize the contract and bring it to the sheriff, and then bring it, that, once he's acted, bring it back to you for your final approval. But it says very clearly in paragraph two of this draft that, uh, there would be, oh goodness, let me see how I write, that Franklin County, including all its residents and visitors, shall not now or in the future provide any ad valorem or non-ad valorem funds from any source for any part of the cost or expenses of the rehab center, including but not necessarily limited to the capital and non-capital cost and expenses for licensing, insurance, housing, maintenance, repairs, administration, staff, or operation to rehab center. So, yes, um, the contract, I think, covers.
You still think it covers that?
I'm having no sheriff's deputies as well, just to be specific.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I just want to know that, because you're talking about a hundred and something thousand, you know, almost two-hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on how many deputies might be utilized out there.
That's right.
Uh, and taking off the streets and patrolling and everything else, you'll come back and say he needs more deputies now. So, that would be a conflated, a conflated way to use county staff, but then want to replace that staff at the next budget here, which is going to cost more ad valorem taxes.
So what, the specific question is not to use any sheriff's deputies at the rehab center, is that what?
County employees.
County employees.
How about county equipment? Uh, let's continue it.
I don't know that my concerns, that y'all asked the sheriff to get with the attorney and, and go over, nobody's talked to me, so I don't know if any of the concerns that y'all made as part of that motion have been addressed. One of my concerns was legally, can he have his employees working out there? I'm not saying extra employees, but can he, as a, running a nonprofit, can county employees be out there on nonprofit property doing work for the drug rehab?
You're right.
On your own county payroll.
Right.
I don't know that, that's why.
No, you're right, Marshall, you can't.
I mean, county resources are for public service, I don't see how you could take a staffed county employee and stick them into a nonprofit profit situation.
Marshall, you're right, you can't do that.
I mean, that.
You shouldn't be able to.
The, the motion that was made, that, the motion that was made at that time, and I made the motion, was to take in your concerns and see how those concerns could be dealt with.
Right.
That was what was said in the motion, if you want to have Lori look at the minutes, that's in the motion.
Yeah, I, I know it's in the motion, but I haven't had any conversations with the sheriff or anybody about any of those concerns.
We, that was in my motion, so.
It was supposed to be the sheriff and the attorney get to get an answer for it. So I don't know, he may have covered them all, but I, I have got my list with me right now.
I would say what Commissioner Parrish is also saying would be, we don't want any sheriff equipment out there either, this is a, this is a standalone entity that, that's coming from sources of funding and the resources that don't, are not owned by the county. That's people and equipment, not to be there.
Well, that's basically what I was trying to say.
Yeah. We probably ought to write that in there specifically.
He takes that equipment or the people away from the public.
That's right, then we have to pay more.
And put them into a nonprofit, and then he comes back the next year and wants more, I need more equipment, I need more personnel, based on me utilizing personnel at this work, and this is all supposed to be nonprofit, not done by the sheriff department, done by LLC, and the taxpayers shouldn't have to fund that. And I know that's part of what Michael, uh, Attorney Schuler has in there. But I just want it to be clear, so you can't come back and make cases and...
That's right, and I think the sheriff, in the spirit of all that, has already got a, uh, a bill going through the state legislature right now for funding of this facility.
He's applied, he, he's got somebody applying for, we haven't went through legislature yet, but.
It, it, it was heard in one committee last week, I believe.
And I think there's some federal monies that are also available out there, that they've made available this last year in the federal budget that pertains to the opioid, uh, epidemic we have going on right now across the country. So I think there's some federal funds also being applied for.
Again, I did not come prepared to present the, the contract for, for meaningful discussion, I'll, I'll have any discussion you want, but I'm not necessarily prepared for it, I've been speed reading through here based on the comments and the, the completion of that paragraph that I was reading, saying it is the intent of the parties that Franklin County, including all of its residents and visitors, shall have zero financial responsibility or obligation for the rehabilitation center. But this provision does not prevent voluntary contributions from residents and visitors. Furthermore, it's the intent of the parties that the corporation, the nonprofit alone, shall be responsible for obtaining or raising one-hundred percent of the money for the rehabilitation center from sources other than Franklin County. So, I think paragraph two's pretty clear that they'd get zero funding from the county. Now, if somebody wants to donate, they can donate, but not coming from public funds. But I will have that conversation further with the sheriff.
I'll just put in there, including personnel and equipment, to finish off the paragraph.
Oh, I've got that in here, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I agree.
This has just been one of those days, and I guess it's gonna be this way all day. The only thing, the only thing I'm confused about, yes, the, the middle drawing, we all know where the compound's at, where the inner fence is at, the addition of the one acre, I'm not comfortable with saying yes to, till we know for sure what, I mean, they say what their intent is, but when you have a zoning category, there's all these uses, once you get the property, you can use what you intend to. So unless we're gonna include in the contract, there's not gonna be any subletting of any of these properties, I'm not good with it.
It's gardening. It's gardening.
Unless we put in the contract that it's not gonna be subletted to another entity, I'm not good with it.
Okay, I'll take my, my back.
That's the point I was trying to say.
Okay, tell them we guarding.
I think that's where the chairman was heading in, to say anything to them.
Sounds good.
We're basically saying they don't want the sheriff leasing this to somebody else.
Right, right, he told me it's for gardening, he gets a field road up, he told me for gardening.
Well, I have more work to do, I'll be back.
Yeah.
Good to you.
Uh, I have two other non-action information items on the board, was there any discussion from the board on either of those items, I would not bother to read them at this late hour.
No, but, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have something for you, Attorney Schuler.
Yes.
Since you're doing nothing else. This would be pretty straightforward though, because I believe that the Florida Association of Counties already has, uh, wording on it. I'd like for you to bring maybe to the next meeting the re, the resolution for us to consider adopting in the Second Amendment sanctuary for this county.
I'll be glad to, Commissioner, if that's the will of the board.
Second.
You made that in a motion?
Yes, sir.
I have, I have people come to me yesterday about this issue. And I went last night and watched a lot of it on TV, what's going on with Virginia, actually the sheriff of that county, or one of the counties on the TV, said he was not enforcing, and quite frankly, our local sheriff said he wasn't enforcing, taking people's guns from them and all this, so I think that's something that we need to look forward to.
Right.
Look forward on.
Yeah.
And the sheriff is beginning to amalgamate his own gun range to make it even better.
Alrighty, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They pass unanimous? That's it.
Yes, sir, no more.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Schuler? Keep up the good work. Commissioners, come in.
Would like to let all of you know that our boys are playing at home tonight at seven. They continue to be second place in our district, we play Saint Joe's Saturday at home, and we haven't lost to Saint Joe's since twenty-seventeen, so you might want to come watch.
Why they ain't first? Why they ain't first?
Oh, because of, because, uh, the Florida High School Athletic Association, their wisdom, took a team that was, uh, size above us last year and moved them down to our conference this year.
Yeah, what, what, who they moved in, I would.
Crossroads, Quincy.
All right, any more commissioners come in, um, okay, so they having, that, that's for the public this evening, that meeting they having.
Yes, sir. What you can see on your light?
The man said we having a ball game. I've got to go to the ball.
If you haven't gotten enough, just come back.
Hey, I gotta go to the ball game. All right, meeting adjourned.